Hey, coming to you here today from the Everhuisrooms Culinary Arts Department. We're here to taste some of the pizza made by the students and Mr. Cory Barasa and Mr. Rich Marino, two of our teachers here. They did a fantastic job. Today we've got a pesto pizza with a little pepperoni on it. So let's see what it's like. Ooh, nice and fluffy, so you know the rules. One bite, let's see how it goes. Light, real tasty. If I'm gonna give her a score, I'm going 8.1. Every week we're gonna be doing something like this, or every couple weeks. So please keep an eye out for our content. Let's see what the kids can put together here. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the Everett School Committee meeting for Monday, September 15, 2025. The time is 6:31 PM. Clerk, could you call the role to determine a quorum?
Student Representative Emma Perry. Mr. Almeda Barros. Ms. Babcock.
Present.
Ms. Barros.
Present.
Ms. Cornelio.
Present.
Ms. Christiano.
Present.
Mayor Di Maria. Mr. D'Onofrio. Ms. Garan.
Present.
Mr. La Monica.
Present.
Madam Chair.
Present.
Seven members present.
Seven members present. We do have a quorum. If everyone can join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral three, reading of the records for Tuesday, September 2, 2025.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Barros, seconded by Ms. Babcock, to waive the reading from Tuesday, September 2, 2025, and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral four, public comment.
Make a motion to...
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to open public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Public comment is now open. Mr. Clerk, if you could just note Mr. Barros's arrival. We have two speakers. On our public comment sign-up sheet, you have three minutes to speak. That starts as soon as you state your name. First up is David Fortin. Mr. Fortin?
Good evening. David Fortin, Ward Four. Can anyone please tell me where on the Internet do I find school committee agenda? I've looked, I looked all over to see what the agenda is going to be this evening, and I couldn't find it anywhere. Maybe I'm looking in the wrong place. That's what I'm thinking. Okay. What is going on, please, with the old Pope John High School? Will it be used as a school ever? Our schools are overcrowded as it is, and the high school, the old high school is only be able to contain so many people, so many kids. We seniors, as well as parents, care for our kids, care for our grandkids. That's why you see us up here from time to time, speaking about it, wondering. We hear nothing. Some of the, one of the, one of the Everett schools that I knew of was built for only 650 schools, 650 students. There's over 1,000 in that school. Is that the way it is with all the schools here in Everett? Overpopulated? There shouldn't be. In the old high school, I'm, I'm still concerned about contamination. I know it's probably been cleaned out. Years ago, when it was open, there was a vocational high school in there. You had an automotive section, which, as we know, contains contaminants. There was a graphic arts section, as we know, contains, contained contaminants, and there were probably others. Please, I would not want any of my children, or grandchildren, or great-grandchildren, if that should be the case, to be exposed to anything that'll harm them later on in life. Everett used to take pride in their schools. Let's continue to make Everett a proud city of their school system. Several, several times I've been here in the past to speak about the executive sessions. I know some of the, some districts do have them recorded and are shown to the public after they're held, maybe like the next week, or after that particular thing is resolved, issue has been resolved. We need to know what's going on. I don't think it's fair that we, the people, who pay you, are left in the dark.
Thirty seconds. Thank you, Mr. Fortin. Thank you, Mr. Fortin. Our next speaker is Kimberly Auger. Ms. Auger?
Hi. Good evening. Kimberly Auger, 40, Woodward Street, President of the Everett Teachers Association. I just wanted to say thank you for an amazing start of the year. Our teachers came in prepared, our buildings came in, were ready for us, and our administrators welcomed us with open arms, and our students were able to have an amazing first two weeks of school. So I just want to thank all of you because it takes a village and together. Collaboration and through all of the hard work that we put in together, we did this together. So on behalf of the Everett Teachers Association, thank you, and I look forward to an amazing year with all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Auger. Seeing no other speakers on the sign-up sheet, is anyone interested in public comment? Seeing none.
Make a motion to close public comment?
Second.
Motion has been made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Barros, to close public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Public comment is now closed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Roman numeral five, reporter, the student representative. So tonight, I'm happy to welcome our student representative, Emma Perry. Emma is a senior here at Everett High School, treasure of the class of 2026, and was selected to fill this important role, one of which I'm sure she's going to give a tremendous voice on behalf of all the students here at the high school. Today, Emma is joined by other members of her class offices, our senior class president, Danica Pham. Danica, thank you. Vice President Isabella Bacallo. Isabella, thank you. And we also have Leandra Panero, who's also a student representative, who's joined to welcome our new student representative to this school committee. Emma is a member of the, excuse me, the last, the Law Pathway, is captain of the varsity cheerleading team, a key, a key club officer, and a competitive dancer. This past summer, she interned at the local Everett Cooperative Bank, and I know when I speak here tonight, on behalf of the whole school committee, we welcome you to the table and to hear the wonderful comments you'll make on behalf of Everett High School. So thank you for joining us. This floor is yours.
Take it away, Emma.
Thank you, Superintendent Hart. Good evening, everybody. Within the first few weeks of school, sports have commenced. The varsity football team is currently 2-0. The boys will play Zavarian, supported by the EHS Band and Varsity Cheer Team, this Friday. The theme will be Whiteout in Westwood. The girls volleyball team is playing Lynn English downstairs in the gym, and currently have a record of 1-3. Both boys and girls cross country teams have also started their seasons, and the golf team is currently 2-2. Boys soccer is off to a challenge in beginning, but the girls team is 2-3, beating Marblehead this, or beating Lawrence High School this weekend, 6-0. Finally, field hockey is a game in Marblehead this evening, and is currently 1-2. Clubs have also begun at Ever High. History Club reconvened today, and the Wave Club has stocked the ladies rooms of Everett High School with feminine products for students. College visits have also started up, including one from Virginia Tech this afternoon. The theater company held auditions for their rendition of The Late Bus, and this month, freshman, sophomore, and junior class elections are coming up as well. There is also a college readiness night for parents of Grade 12 students this Thursday at the high school. Also, thanks to Guidance for being attentive to students and schedule changes as it's the beginning of the school year. In closing, although we miss Mr. Lynch and Mr. Zutera, we've had a great start to our school year and welcome Dr. Braga, Mr. De Loretto, and Ms. Hughes to Everett alongside Mr. Murphy. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma.
I'd also like to acknowledge Ms. McWilliam, who's here with us this evening, a teacher and the club advisor. Thank you, Ms. McWilliam, for all that you do for our students, and in particular, I know these class officers really appreciate the support you give them and direction that they love having you as their advisor. So thank you, Ms. McWilliam.
Motion to...
Before we accept the report, Ms. Christiano?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to congratulate you, Emma, as well as our president, vice president, and I'm sorry, I forget your last, your first name. What is it?
Leandra.
Leandra. Well, it's so nice to see you, and so great to see you all committed to doing great work. You know, when I see you, Emma, I'm reminded of somebody that I know is very special to you, your grandmother. I knew her well, Patricia, and she used to call me, your mom didn't know. She would call me because she was worried that you're going to the high school. And we would talk, and we would talk, and, but I got to tell you, she loved you so much, and I know she's looking down right now, beaming from, you know, with a big giant smile, and I know she's so proud of you. So, you know, good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Christiano. Ms. Babcock?
I would also like to welcome Emma. I have known her since she was five as well, and I have literally watched her grow up to this young adult that she is today. I call her the hostess with the mostess because she just is a lovely speaker and a calming presence, and I can't tell you how many times I've been welcomed to establishments in the city and events at our high school, and she's made us awful welcome. And it's like watching my own daughter, to see you sitting there, so, well.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. Thank you again, Emma. Thank you again, Emma. We're excited to have you here and look forward to a school year together with you. So with that, would we, would we like to accept?
Make a motion to accept the report of the student representative and place it on file.
Second.
Motion. Motion made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to accept the first report of the student representative and place it on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Excuse me, Roman numeral six, reporter, the superintendent's update, reporter of the superintendent. Just have a few remarks this evening. I apologize for my raspy voice. It's allergy season. Let me also thank Emma for her energy here at Everett High School. She's been an amazing student, and she's just done so many things at this school, and I thank you for willingness to serve on this school committee with the rest of these wonderful people who are here for the betterment of our school department and school system. So thank you again. Just a quick reminder, we have five Mondays in September, so our next regular school committee is on October the 6th, just for folks who try to follow the dates for meetings. The upcoming week, this week, we have, hosted by our guidance department, we call it a slice of college. We give parents and their students some pizza, but we talk to them about, here in the Crimson Cafe, we talk to them about college application process. So for folks at home that have any concerns or want more information about applying for college and how to go about it, and some ins and outs, I think it would be a great idea to come up here, Everett High School Crimson Cafe, this, this week, on the 18th at 5:30, to hear some great information. The following Thursday, on September 25, our EL Family Night will be hosted once again at the Parlin School. I think I mentioned this at our last meeting. This is open to all families in Everett from 4 to 6, and we have vendors and food and information about lots of things happening here at Everett Public Schools. So I'm just sending that out as a reminder as well. I'd also like to remind people about homecoming today. We shot a quick video for Instagram to promote Everett High School homecoming events. We will host on October the 25th, which is a Saturday that game starts at 1:30, but prior to that, at 11:00, we'll have a tailgate party, so to speak, along and around the Everett Stadium to celebrate homecoming as an event for all of our families, and we hope, we'll have some information out about that as well as the weeks progress towards, towards that. Today, we welcomed, excuse me, to the administration building, members of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that met with our district instructional leadership team. This is a team that was convened a little over two years ago as a result of looking at information of test scores and the like from previous years and trying to find a way in which we could institute practices and, and programs, curriculum changes, all the like, to have better outcomes for our students. And so the department has met with us on a regular basis, and we convened a district-wide team who have been looking at information, very data-driven, with good results. And again, I can't really get too far into it, but, you know, from the data that we reviewed today from test scores and the like, you know, we are definitely on a path forward and onward and upward, as I said earlier, to the crew. It's, it's no thanks to, it's thanks to all the hard work of our staff, the interventionists, the reading specialists, the teachers, the leadership at the schools, the, the professional development we've provided over these last couple of years. We are now seeing results, and those results are positive for our students across our schools, across the disciplines. So when information is finalized and can be public, I'll, I'll put together a comprehensive piece for you to, to hear about and to celebrate the successes that we've enjoyed over the last almost two years now. So I wanted to thank Dr. Adams and the instructional leadership team that have put a lot of time, even over the summer, putting together all kinds of initiatives that will support our students now going into this '25-'26 school year. I'd also like to take this opportunity, from time to time, as you know, I've invited staff to come forward to introduce themselves because I know many of you have asked for phone numbers for different folks for the leadership of our, our buildings. And tonight, I'd like to just recognize our newest addition, General Counsel Brackett Smith. Brackett comes to us from Washington, DC, with his wife Abby and his child Rory, and they've come to a neighboring city, which I won't mention, he didn't choose Everett, but he did decide to come to Everett Public Schools after a career in the Washington, DC area. So I thought I'd have him come up and say hello and introduce himself more officially. So Brackett, why don't you just take a seat?
Make a motion to invite a guest.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barros, seconded by Ms. Babcock, to invite General Counsel Brackett Smith before us. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Welcome, Attorney Smith.
Thank you. I probably should have known that rule before stepping up here, so I apologize. Brackett Smith, I am living in Somerville. If I, if I'd known I'd be working for Everett at the time I signed my lease, it could have all been different. But I'm happy to be here with you all. We just moved up here last week. As Superintendent said, we came from Washington, DC. I've spent many years working in state and local government for a variety of agencies down in the DC area. I'm a graduate of American University in the West Virginia University College of Law. I am soon to be licensed to practice in Massachusetts. I'm practicing under my DC license right now, but in the next couple of weeks, should have my license here.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
Make a motion to excuse our customer, our guest, we have customer, thanks.
That's the second rule, Attorney.
Motion has been made and seconded to excuse our guest. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you again for joining us.
And at your table, you still have a copy of the district highlights that Mr. O'Connor prepares for you, just to get a glimpse of what's occurred in the past week in the district that I don't necessarily cover here on my general remarks. So that's my official report for this evening, and I... So, that's my official report for this evening, and I would now turn to item number two on the agenda.
Make a motion to accept the report of the superintendent and place it on file.
Second. Motion has been made by Ms. Babcock, seconded by Ms. Barrows, to accept the report of the superintendent and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
So, I'd, I'd ask for you to take these items collectively for favorable action, items two through six on your agenda, all of which acknowledge the generous donations of backpacks and school supplies that we've received over the past several weeks. Each agenda, each of these agenda items talk about the specific donor and the amount of items that we collected from them. This is always a great time of year because we have so many people that do come forward to support our students in so many ways. One way, of course, is backpacks and school supplies that our, our young folks need. And so, I would just ask you, I'll read each of these, but if, if you would, take them collectively and just accept them, and we'll send a letter of thanks to them on your behalf.
Make a motion to accept items two to six collectively?
I'll second after the superintendent reads.
So, item two is acceptance of a donation of backpacks and school supplies valued at approximately $8,500 from Teamsters Local 25. Teamsters is a regular donor in the last couple of years. Actually, they gave us some good press. They had local news, news folks here and recorded a couple of segments for us telling, telling the public how great neighbors they were was easy for me to do because they really have been wonderful partners in, to our school district. Item three is an acceptance of donation of backpacks and school supplies valued at approximately $4,500 from Members Plus Credit Union. Those are the folks on Broadway diagonally across from the Parlin High School, Parlin School, excuse me, and Parlin has been the recipient of that donation over the last couple of years. Item four is the acceptance of a donation of school supplies valued at approximately $4,000 from Encore Boston Harbor employees. So, they have a drive at the Encore Boston Harbor, and they donate various supplies that aren't in backpacks, but they have every imaginable item that you can think of to put in a backpack, so we've accepted those. Item five is donation of backpacks and school supplies valued at approximately $2,500 from the Saugus Everett Alex Large 642. Again, these are repeated donors who are very generous to our students. These backpacks are filled with lots of good things. It's not just the backpack itself, but lots of high-quality items, and we do check it to make sure there's nothing in there that we wouldn't want a young, young person to have. And number six is the donation of backpacks and school supplies valued at approximately $2,500 from the Elliott Family Resource Center. And those are all the donations that we received so far.
Thank you, Superintendent. A motion was made and seconded to accept the donations, items number two through six, with a motion made and seconded with a letter of customary thanks. We'll do roll call on this.
Mr. Almeda Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Christiano?
Yes.
Ms. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
So moved, eight zero. Motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Item number seven, acceptance of a grant from Project Lead the Way in the amount of $14,000. I'm asking for your favorable action on this grant. This was obtained by our math department under the direction of Dave Babino. These funds are used to enroll Everett High School computer science teachers in an ongoing online training program led by Project Lead the Way. This is a great resource. This is a national organization, and we were fortunate enough to get this award in the amount of $14,000.
Move to favorable action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the grant from Project Lead the Way in the amount of $14,000. Roll call.
Ms. Almeda Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Christiano?
Yes.
Ms. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
So moved, eight zero. Motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Number eight, acceptance of a grant from Next Generation Learning Challenges in the amount of $5,600. We received this grant to send representatives from the Everett Public Schools to the Innovative Schools Learning Excursion, which is held in Washington, DC. This opportunity will allow our educators to utilize innovative learning environments and teaching techniques for the benefit of multilingual learners. So, this is another grant that we were able to receive as a result of a successful application, and we can send some educators to, to enjoy this experience.
Favorable action?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept a grant from the Next Generation Learning Challenges in the amount of $5,600. Roll call.
Ms. Almeda Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Christiano?
Yes.
Ms. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, eight zero.
Eight zero. Motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Item number nine, request approval to establish a new student activity account for the Advanced Manufacturing Program at Everett High School, and I'm asking for your favorable action. We'd need the account established in order to collect funds from items that they would sell to students. We have accounts under different student names. This would be under the Advanced Manufacturing Program.
Make a motion for favorable action?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to establish a new student activity account for the Advanced Manufacturing Program at Everett High School. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business.
Room Number Seven, items submitted by school committee members. Item one is to discuss the current practices regarding student access to restrooms at the high school during the school day. This is offered by Ms. Babcock.
Ms. Babcock?
Excuse me, I'm just, I have just a little piece of information I prepared. So, I have this agenda item regarding the bathroom policy at the high school. I did take a look at the student handbook, and the laboratory policy is, isn't very comprehensive, and I had a number of constituents reach out asking for clarification on that policy. I am sure that when there's new administration, there are new things that we want to institute and put into place, but given that the school committee's role is to help develop policies as well, I think it would be great to talk about this, this, this policy and see what Mr. Hart and the administration have developed here and, and have that open so that everyone may hear the exact details of the policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock.
Would you like something now, or did you want to discuss this in a meeting, or? Because I, I mean, we have a, first of all, the student handbook is being revised to reflect some current practices and policies that we'd like for you to adopt in the handbook. And as a result of the high school, which I think is your specific question, this past year, at the recommendation of our former principal here, we instituted a policy where we have, we close off the bathrooms during class time and specifically during the break period when they're changing classes, and then when a student goes into a class, they're closed as well. They can go to the restroom as needed at other times. The restrooms on the first floor that are always open, the nurse's office, students can leave the class and go to the restroom if they need to. We decided to do this at the recommendation of the principal after looking at other school districts and how they handled student safety while in the building of this size, and our bathrooms here don't have doors on them, as you probably all know. And we've realized that that wasn't always the best practice, and while we do have folks in the hallways supporting the movement of our students moving through to make sure they don't congregate and get to class on time, the bathrooms were definitely a place to congregate, and unfortunately, over time, we've also experienced some, you know, damage in the bathrooms that caused kind of a big problem. We had to close bathrooms down completely because of clogged or broken toilets. I could go on and on and on. So, this, this practice was instituted this year to see if we could, A, alleviate the amount of time kids aren't actually in the classroom but, and out of that bathroom, and potentially reduce any risks associated with what they could be doing in the bathroom, as well as the damage that there was being caused in some of those areas, because you just can't be everywhere all the time. So, it was a combination of things, and I, I know that we looked at other school districts that had doors to lock and close, so we were the, one of the few largest school districts in the area that didn't have any secure bathroom facilities. So, we wanted to make sure that they were usable and clean and ready for students when they needed them and not used for the opposite reasons sometimes. So, this was just installed over the summer, and we've, what, two or three weeks into it. We seem to have no issue yet with it. I know a couple of people wanted to understand it, so I'm glad you put this on the agenda for the high school, but the actual practice and the timing of this will also be spelled out in the student handbook.
I, I would like to just ask one other question. So, I, the, the questions that I've been asked, one of them was the times that they were closed and the times that they were accessible. So, if a student needs to use the restroom, they cannot use it the last 10 minutes of class, the shift between the classes, nor the first 10 minutes of class, but they may leave class to use the restroom. What is the procedure for leaving class to use the restroom?
They have to ask the teacher, and the teacher would give them, they have to log out, excuse me, when you leave a classroom here, you're supposed to log that the student has left at, you know, 11:07, and you would imagine that if they're not back in 10 minutes or less, that something's going on. So, that would be how the classroom teacher, and we've often had calls down to the office saying, you know, Robin didn't come back from the bathroom, can somebody go find her? You know, and usually, the success coaches would do just that, and that's what we would continue to do.
Do they need to be escorted to use the restroom, or they can just leave and go and use the restroom? It's just not the last 10 minutes of class or the first 10 minutes of class?
Correct.
And for, for parents, just in case they don't know, periods are typically 80 minutes long.
Correct. And we actually, that 10-minute rule is kind of something we've adopted this year to see how that works, but I think we're also open to looking at the timeline being a little bit less than 10 minutes so that, we're, we're gonna look at that, but we're just trying to get a sense of that. We're gonna, I think Dr. Braga is here, I think he's gonna convene some of the staff here, probably after another couple of weeks, to see what people's feedback. So far, we've had really good feedback. Dr. Braga, I don't want to put any words in your mouth, but I think you would, you're welcome to come up if the committee would like him to come forward.
Motion to bring the principal?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to invite Principal of Everett High School, Dr. Braga before us. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Welcome, Principal Braga.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Thank you so much. I found my glasses in the auditorium a few weeks ago, so now I can see you. When I first saw you, I couldn't see you, so this is a great thing.
So, Dr. Braga, could you answer or address the question that Ms. Babcock had, please, about the timeline?
Yeah, definitely. So, it's the first 10 minutes and the last 10 minutes, and that's like the 10-10 rule. It's pretty typical. All the schools I've worked at, we've, we've done that rule. So, what we've tried to implement, and what I do every week, every Sunday, I send out a, a message or an email to families and the students as well. It's also posted on our website. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor, for doing that. And I try to spell out a lot of these procedures, is in much detail as I can in the moment. So, it's the first 10 and the last 10, but there's some leeway there. We have a messaging system where teachers can message us right away. So, if a student needs the bathroom before those 10 minutes, we'll go right away to open it up. In addition to that, you know, just students I talk to in the hallway, if you see me and you need it right away, we'll open the bathroom. So, we try to make it flexible, but at the same time, keep that time going. It helps with transitions, it helps obviously with facilities as well, too, but we want to make sure students have access to the bathroom as well. So, in the weekly emails, I try to spell that out and then keep it going, so I'll keep that in the weekly email for, you know, maybe three, four, or five weeks, just to give people an opportunity to see it. I will say that people are accessing these weekly emails, which is fantastic. I can see by the number of people that log in. So, that's basically the procedure. It's definitely new to Everett High School, but not necessarily a new bathroom policy. And in terms of the 10 minutes, yeah, definitely, we could take a look at that and see, is that too much? Is it too little? But my recommendation would be, let's try it out for a little bit to see how it goes, and then go ahead and make, make those adjustments. But we do leave those safe proofs in, just in case, again, you know, I would say, a couple of times a day, a teacher will message all of the administration to say, hey, you know, I have a student, and you don't give a name or anything like that, I have a student needs a restroom, go open the bathroom so they can use it.
For those that may not be aware, could you just let you, what they mean by opening the bathrooms, that, because as we were saying earlier, we, we did not previously have any, we don't have doors on our bathrooms.
Yeah, so there's, I, the hardware is like essentially like a gate that gets pulled and locked, so we open that key.
So, I have one other question to follow up on the same train. So, we have this period, you know, last 10, first 10, is what you're saying, and the bathrooms, you're using a gate to lock them, to, to, and, but students can have access to them during their class, just have to say to your, their teacher, I need to use the restroom. So, less disruption in the conversion between periods and, you know, missing the first 10 minutes of class and the last 10 minutes of class, et cetera. Okay. So, my other question for you is, my daughter was a student here at the high school, and if I remember correctly, and I'm not super detailed about this, and I'm sure you can fill me in, there's five lunch periods, correct? And the students go down to lunch based on their floor?
Give a take, yeah.
Like, fifth floor is fifth period approximately, or something to that effect? So, is, is the restroom open during that lunch period on that floor? So, if they're on the third floor and they have third lunch, may they use the restrooms on the third floor?
So, if they're down in the cafeteria for lunch, they're gonna use the ones on the first floor. If they don't have lunch and they're on the third floor, there's bathrooms open on their floor.
The first floor is always open?
Yes.
Always?
Well, I'm just, I'm just only a little bit concerned, because I want to just have that clearer in my mind, just because I know lunch periods are super short because we are very overcrowded, and our, our, you know, our teachers and staff work like they are very efficient, I should say, ushering students in, getting them to get their lunch, and ushering them out, and, you know, I'm just concerned that, you know, we all like to use the restroom at lunchtime, and having a 20-minute lunch, what kind of lines are ensuing from having? Is there any lines on the first floor, or is it slowing up the process for people being able to enjoy their 20-minute lunch?
So, I'm typically, I don't want to say all the time, but I'm typically on the ground quite a bit in the school. So, if I was to see at a lunch that the line was pretty long, I would say, hey, do you want to send some students up to the second floor to reduce the line? So, some of it, you just have to have the eye test and be on the ground, but to answer your question, first floor is open. If you have lunch, you should use that bathroom.
Okay.
But even during the lunch period, which is third period, there's a bathroom open on each floor.
Okay. So, what you're saying is that during the lunch period, there is a bathroom open on each floor, so students could use that bathroom if, so if you had fifth lunch and you're on the fifth floor, you could, there's a bathroom open that they can use?
Yes.
Do I have that correct? I know it's complicated, you know, sometimes students don't always share the details of their daily experience, but, you know, you know, pro, after four years and my daughter graduating from here, picked up a couple of things along the way. So, it, so you're, you're assessing it to see if this becomes, because I would hate for kids to miss lunch for 20 minutes after, with, with 2,300 kids in the school and then waiting in line to be able to get lunch and use the restroom and eat lunch and clear lunch and leave is not a very lot of time.
No, it isn't, and a lot, like I said before, you have to be there to assess it to see.
Sure.
Like, so if I see a student that hasn't finished their lunch, I'm gonna say, go ahead and sit down and finish your lunch, and then get them a pass to go to class, whatever it may be. But from the most part, what I've seen so far, we, we are moving pretty smoothly with the transition, so we'll just assess it and keep an eye on it.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. I don't know if any of my colleagues have questions.[1703.23]
Ms., thank you, Ms. Babcock. Ms. Barros?
Hello, thank you. So are the bathrooms locked, like, when they're transitioning from class to class? And then is there teachers, every period then, locking these gates?
Success coaches on each floor that lock them, yeah.
And is this just like going to be a trial period to see how it goes?
So this is the system that, you know, we came into and we wanted to try. So, I mean, the 10-10 rule that we're talking about is something that, I don't want to say is consistent, but it's used in many, many high schools. If you had a door, it'd probably look, I don't want to say a little prettier, but it would look a little prettier to lock a door versus a gate, but the way the bathrooms are, I'm not sure how you would get a door there. So, yeah, we're trying to implement this as a consistent system, but obviously take a look at it and see what we may or may not need to adjust.
Well, I guess to Ms. Babcock's point, I guess, like, my concern, too, would be around the lunch, because I'm guessing there's a couple hundred kids at one lunch, and they are so short. So if a kid is trying to get out of class, use the bathroom quick before they're going to lunch, and they have, like, an emergency, it's just kind of...
Yeah, sure. So maybe this would be better. So like, if you have lunch, you're on the first floor, correct? So you have a bathroom open there, but if you don't have lunch and you're on the second, third, fourth, or fifth floor, there's a bathroom open that whole time. So if you're not at lunch and you're in the second, third, fourth, or fifth floor, there's a bathroom open there. So if you're at lunch, the first floor is open, you would use that bathroom. And in the case that, let's say the bathrooms are, the lines long, then we'd bring some students up to the second floor so they could have access to the bathroom.
But those kids would be during lunch, correct?
If, yeah, so that's the best way for me to explain it. Like, if you're on the first floor and you're at lunch, that's the bathroom you would use. But if you're not at lunch, you'll be on your floor, and there's a bathroom there you'd be able to utilize.
I guess my only concern would be, like, if they're in a line, and during their lunch period, having to walk up to the second floor, find the bathroom, walk back down, and get their lunch.
It's real, it's really close. And because, like, so for example, like, a lot of us are, so there's a success coach on every floor, so we have someone there to radio to move up. Like, I'm there to say, hey, let's come to the second floor as well, too. But again, it's something to keep an eye on, and I can keep an eye on it, too, and this feedback is much appreciated.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Babcock?
Really, just more of a comment, and, you know, not to, it's just, the thing that I'm concerned about just is that bodily autonomy is kind of important, and with a three-minute switch between classes and the bathroom is closed for 20 to 3 minutes in total at beginning and end, and I know we would like to say, you know, we can all hold it, you know, but I think that people can't. I think that some, for women and girls, that sometimes you need to use the bathroom when you need to use the bathroom, and I personally, I know that when I was younger, I would not want to sort of call myself out that I need to go right now. And I have had experiences, I'm not going to say with any of these teachers here, I'm sure that that is not the case, but I've had my own personal experiences where it's rather embarrassing to have to say, I really must go now, and then sometimes people question you. They'll say, well, why? Why do you need to go now? Can't you wait for 15 minutes? Can't you wait until the time period is over? And I think, you know, with 52% of the species being female and having, you know, menstrual cycles, it affects our stomachs, our ability to use the bathroom, and it makes me, like, a little concerned. I know that, I know a lot of the high school kids, because they just graduated, and a couple of them have said, you know, it feels embarrassing to go and ask to use the restroom if I'm in a sort of emergency circumstance, or what if a student feels ill? Like, I know when my daughter was in sixth grade, she threw up in the sink in Lafayette. Luckily, there was a sink. So, yeah, I just wonder, you know, is that too long of a time? I know you're saying it's typical of other high schools. I certainly get the opposite side, you know, not missing class, not just hanging around the bathroom, et cetera, and missing opportunities. I do get that, but I do, am concerned about that, and I am concerned about the lunch period aspect of it. So maybe we can look at how many restrooms we have open on the floors at the lunch period, you know, maybe two, one at each stairwell to make it easier, or something that makes it more...
They're all open, right? They're all open at lunch?
Yeah, maybe I wasn't doing a good job explaining that, but yeah, we had...
They're all open at lunch?
Yeah.
And this is the first year that we've done it, so I don't, last year, it was just an open policy.
Yeah.
And, you know, just, not that we should be breaking it down in cost, but we spent over $40,000 in broken toilets and sinks at Everett High School last year. And to put in these grates, they're not the prettiest, as we referenced, but it is, excuse me, it's an attempt to bring some structure to the bathroom break period so that it is only for bathroom use and not for some other things. And so I think that Dr. Bragger and his team are going to watch that, because I don't disagree with you, Robin, and Ms. Babcock, I agree. When you have to go to the bathroom, you have to go to the bathroom, and I want to be sure that everyone has access to the facilities when they need it. So I know that we are watching this carefully, as he said, and we're going to make some adjustments. I don't disagree with what you said.
I think that what I am going to propose, and maybe I'll put it in the form of a motion, is since we are starting to put this into our policy and procedures handbook, that we could, as a committee, take a look at what the policy is in writing and read it, and that when we vote on the handbook, that we can consider that information, too, because it would be nice to know. I see the benefits. I also can see the drawbacks as well, and I can also see that people are thinking about how we can adjust it to make it work and be beneficial for everybody. So I'd like to make a motion to propose to look at this policy when we are updating the handbook, and perhaps get it in writing for us to take a look at it, because parents want to know completely exactly what it's like. So just to clarify one more time, so I'm making that motion, making a motion to put it in writing so we can consider it in the high school handbook.
I believe Ms. Cornelio had a few questions for Principal Braga.
I had a question. How do you call them down? Is it like the fifth floor, the second floor? Because I worked here for five years, and I remember quite a few pileups. I was involved in a pileup.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I got Achilles' tendonitis. It wasn't fun, because they're rushing.
Yeah, to get down, yeah.
Blah, 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 pileup.
It's pretty orderly. I think it's pretty much done by floor, but it's not completely that way.
Yeah.
So each lunch is relatively done by floor, but it's done in such a way that it's even.
Okay, because I just asked, because I could remember there, clear as day. It was terrible running.
Yeah, no, it's pretty orderly coming down a lunch, and again, it's presence that really, really helps.
Right, right. Well, that's a good thing to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to retract my previous motion and refer this to rules and committee for consideration. The subcommittee rules in.
Second. Okay, motion has been made and seconded to refer this piece to rules, policy, and procedure. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, motion passed. Does anyone have any further questions for Principal Braga?
I do have one more little clarification. So all of the bathrooms are open at lunchtime on any floor?
Yes.
Are we sure? Is Ms. Sinchetti shaking her head no behind you?
If they're not, then I can definitely make sure that they are.
Yes. So it sounds like, because the first thing I heard was, there's at least one open on every floor during the lunch period.
There is definitely at least one, but, I mean, I can go back to see to make sure that they all are on each floor.
I'm not even sure it needs to be all, but just enough?
Oh, 100%, there's at least one open on each floor. And again, just keep in mind that, like, we, we have to give lunches to our success coaches, so when they're not there, they can't monitor the bathrooms and be around. Do you know what I mean? So like, those things shift and move, but there is, right now, at least one bathroom open on each floor during the lunch period.
Okay, so if you're on floor two and it's your lunch, you can use the restroom on floor two, or you can go down to the first floor unless you have lunch on the first floor, and then use the first floor bathroom?
So if you're at lunch, the bathroom is the first floor. If you're not at lunch and in your classroom on the second floor, you can use the second floor bathroom.
But it's during that lunch period, though, not any other time of day, because I...
Yeah, it's during that lunch period.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's really complex, and I'm a reading learner, and I really apologize...
I'm trying to make it as simple as possible.
Right. I think I'll, that when we refer to committee, and we can see what the policy is in writing, because the handbook right now, it's really vague. It just says laboratory policy, and I can't even remember. It's only like one sentence. So it would, we'll look at it in committee. I really appreciate and...
Oh, anytime. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you all for all those questions. I'm sure that our families that are listening are appreciating a little bit of clarification.
Yeah, 100%. And just so you know, any parent that's reached out to me, I've talked to them, and I've had plenty students, families, and we've talked, we've clarified it, and everybody seemed to be relatively happy and understanding. I think it's just having someone you can go to and say, hey, I need support here, is helpful, so.
I agree. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Make a motion to dismiss, Dr. Braga, with the customary thanks?
Motion has been made and seconded to excuse Dr. Braga with a customary thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Principal Braga. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Roman numeral eight, subcommittee reports. Item one, the ad hoc superintendent evaluation subcommittee of Wednesday, September 3, 2025.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading and place the committee report on file.
I second the motion.
Motion has been made by Ms. Cristiano, seconded by Mayor D. Maria, to waive the reading of the ad hoc superintendent evaluation subcommittee for Wednesday, September 3, 2025, and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Roman numeral nine, bills and payroll.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cristiano.
I'd like to submit bills and payroll in the amount of $877,157.43.
Motion made by Ms. Cristiano, seconded by Mayor D. Maria, to submit bills and payroll in the amount of $877,157.43. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, nine zero.
So moved, motion passed.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cristiano.
I'd like to make a motion to approve bills and payroll, paid bills, bills and payroll in the amount of $877,157.43.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Cristiano, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, to pay bills and payroll in the amount of $877,157.43. Roll call.
Mr. Almeida Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Babcock?
Yes.
Ms. Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Cornelio?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, nine zero.
So moved, motion passed. Superintendent, the next order of business?
Roman numeral 10, unfinished business. There is none before you. Roman numeral 11, new business. There is none before you. Roman numeral 12, hearings. There is no hearing scheduled. Roman numeral 13, matters for executive session. There are none this evening. Roman numeral 14 is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
On motion for adjournment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I just wanted to, I'm sorry if I missed the welcoming of Emma to the school committee. I just wanted to, on behalf of myself, Mayor, just welcome you, and thank you for all the great things you do in our schools. You're at every event, always volunteering and supporting our community, and it's going to be great to have you as a member of our school committee. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a motion made by Ms. Barros, seconded by Ms. Cornelio, for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have adjourned at 7:21 PM. Thank you, everyone.